The November 5, 2015, regular meeting number seven of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, a moment of silence, and the performance of the National Anthem by the Lake Braddock Middle School Chamber Orchestra under the direction of Austin Isaac. Beautiful. Thank you so much. Thank you, parents, for coming out tonight and sharing your talented students with us. Item 2.02, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.23712D of the Code of Virginia, it is necessary for the Board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on November 5, 2015, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you.
I second.
You seconded. Thank you. Okay. That motion was made by Ms. Strauss, seconded by Mr. Moon. Item 2.03, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. Do I have a motion? Hang on just a second. Mrs. Strauss, go ahead.
Thank you. I wasn't sure which motion we were on.
Thank you. I wasn't sure which motion we were on.
Okay. With pleasure. I offer this motion. I move that the School Board appoint Dr. Chase Ramey as Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources effective January 4, 2016, and authorize the Chairman to execute a contract reflecting this action.
Have a second?
I second.
Seconded by Ms. Reed. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Thank you. Dr. Garza?
Yes. Thank you, members of the Board. We are very definitely pleased to be able to introduce to you all tonight Dr. Chase Ramey, our new Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Dr. Ramey brings a wealth of experience to Fairfax County Public Schools, most recently the Chief Human Resources Officer and Chief Community Affairs Officer in the Iowa City Community School System. There, he led efforts to increase workforce diversity, streamline hiring processes, and initiated a wellness program. Previously, he served as a Chief of Staff in the Kansas City School District. He holds his PhD from University of Iowa and his law degree from the University of Kansas. And we're very delighted to have him. One other thing that's unique about Chase is, once upon a time, served as a Board Member of a school system, and then decided that he wanted to switch careers and become an educator, that he enjoyed participating and being a part of the work. And he's also getting married next summer. So we'll be delighted to watch him plan a wedding and then certainly welcome his new wife to Fairfax County in the very, very near future. So I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Ramey.
Good evening. And just like to say thank you for this opportunity. I'm very excited to come and join Dr. Garza's team here in Fairfax County. There's already tremendous work going on for the students, which is clear, and it's an honor and a privilege to get to be a part of that, as we do great things for the students across the district, and specifically from our area, to work with the great HR team that we have, Ms. Quinn, and the work that we do to support the adults that are taking care of our kiddos. We know that it takes great leaders, teachers, and staff members across the district for good things to happen for students, and I'm proud to be a part of that. So thank you again, and I so very much look forward to being a part of this district. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ramey. Welcome aboard. Item 2.04, Announcements. A few announcements before we begin tonight's meeting. If you would like to review a copy of the agenda and any agenda item that is being discussed tonight, that information is on the table by the auditorium entrance. You may access tonight's agenda and related meeting documents by going to the FCPS website, select School Board, and then Upcoming Meetings and Agendas. The meeting is also being streamed live on the FCPS website homepage. Click on Watch School Board Live. Ms. Darnett Kofax will be absent, and Mr. Stork will be late this evening. Please turn off or silence your cellphone. At this time, I would like to invite Dr. Garza. Now, we already did that. I now call on Mr. Velkoff to welcome Students from the Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow Program.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This privilege would have gone to Ms. Darnett Kofax, but she's away, and so I'm very happy to be here to make this recognition. In our audience tonight, we have students from the Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow Program. This course offering is currently available in seven FCPS high schools and provides students with an opportunity to explore careers in education and build a foundation for teaching. At two different course levels, enrollees participate in field experiences and have opportunities to act as a teacher, applying teaching methods and strategies they have learned. Tonight, we welcome students from Edison, Falls Church, and West Potomac High Schools. Could you please stand? Thank you. So I want to say a few more words to you. I had hoped to come out and have a few words with you before the meeting, but our closed session went longer than anticipated. However, let me give you, if I may, a few words of advice about a career in teaching. You won't become wealthy. You won't become famous, if you choose this, but you will become immortal. And what do I mean by that?
Siri's not sure, but...
Let me compose myself. I, like everybody in this room, carry around memories of teachers who have influenced my life. Dr. Guthrie, Mr. Guthrie, sorry, my physics teacher, in my senior year, gave us a course, six weeks in computer science. This was in 1972. I later went on and chose computer science as a career. There's Mrs. Lawrence, who took our class to our first Shakespeare play, which was Twelfth Night. And I can tell you that the Velkoff family, to this day, there is nothing more fun than going down to Stanton, Virginia, to spend a weekend seeing Shakespeare plays at the Blackfriars Theater. I'm giving you these anecdotes because I know you all, everyone in the room, has anecdotes like this. We carry around our teachers with us throughout our entire lives. Many of them, I'm sure, of my teachers have passed by now. And those who are still with us have no memory of me. They have no idea the extent to which they changed my life. So my thought to you is to know that if you enter teaching, you will have a profound impact on the lives of children, and that they will never, ever, ever forget you. And so if that is the career that you choose, I wish you the very best.
Thank you. And thank you for joining us tonight. As a teacher myself, I also hope that you continue along that path and become teachers. So thank you so much. I will now call on Mr. Press for announcements.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will begin tonight by recognizing Veterans Day, which will be November 11. Veterans Day, formerly Armistice Day, is the anniversary of the armistice, which was signed in the Forest of Campion by the Allies and Germans in 1918, ending World War I after four years of conflict. At 5:00 AM on Monday, November 11, 1918, the Germans signed the armistice, and order was issued for all firing to cease, so the hostilities of the First World War ended. This day began with the laying down of arms, blowing of whistles, impromptu parades, and closing of places of business. All over the globe, there were many demonstrations. No doubt, the world had never before witnessed such rejoicing. Veterans Day is observed annually in the United States in honor of all those, living and dead, who served in the United States Armed Forces. The School Board directs school personnel to provide students with instructional activities that honor veterans and recognize the role of the military in the American democracy. Many schools have special events to which they invite veterans and members of the school community on active military duty. We will also be recognizing American Education Week, which will be from November 16 through the 20th. American Education Week was established in 1921 by the National Education Association to raise public awareness of the importance of public education in America. This year's theme, Great Public Schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility, reminds all Americans of the importance of public education and offers an opportunity to celebrate public education and honor those who ensure that every child receives a quality education. As part of the observance, community leaders are invited to serve as educators for a day in order to get a glimpse at a day in the life of a school employee. American Education Week features a special observance on each day of the week, including parents, education support professionals, and substitute educators. And finally, we'll be recognizing Geography Awareness Week, which will be from the 15 through the 21st. Geography Awareness Week is an opportunity to focus on geography, as a critical component of 21st century learning. The 2015 theme, Explore the Power of Maps, focuses on developing spatial thinking through maps, a critical skill that students can develop as they learn geography and earth and environmental sciences. Geography Awareness Week was established by presidential proclamation in 1987 to underscore the importance of geographic understanding, to ensure our nation's economic competitiveness, national security, environmental sustainability, and livability of our communities in the 21st century. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Press. Item 2.05, Recognition of School Psychology Awareness Week. I call on Mr. McElvein.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The theme for the 2015 School Psychology Awareness Week is Connect the Dots and Thrive, with a focus on engaging students at all levels of learning and development to promote personal achievement, growth, and resilience, as well as a sense of connectedness and well-being. School psychologists work in all educational settings to positively impact the academic and social-emotional development of students through the provision of mental health services that build resilience, promote developmental assets, and foster good citizenship. Their most important responsibility is to ensure the welfare and safety of students. To fulfill that responsibility, school psychologists strive to attain and maintain high standards of empirically-based practice and to promote professional ethics in their daily work. School psychologists collaborate with teachers, parents, and school personnel to create safe, healthy, and supportive learning environments for all students. School psychologists collaborate with school teams to address students' learning and behavioral problems through implementation of multi-tiered prevention and intervention strategies. They suggest improvements to classroom management strategies or parenting techniques, bring knowledge of assessment and data collection to measure progress and outcomes of interventions, and encourage practices that effectively promote student learning and mental wellness. At this time, I would like to invite all attendees in the audience who provide school psychological services to the FCPS community to come forward for a photograph with the Board, and I think we all want to recognize you for this special week. Thank you. And as always, thank you to Didi Baylor for the sweet treats.
Okay. Item 2.06, Resolution Naming the Gymnasium at Hutchinson Elementary School. I call on Ms. Strauss.
Thank you very much. First, I would like to invite Mr. Rutherford to come down and stand by the podium so that we can honor you officially. Mr. Rutherford is a long-term, longtime, and much-loved teacher and personnel at Hutchinson Elementary School, so I'm very pleased that we have this opportunity this evening to name a portion of the school after you. Whereas Stuart "Tim" Rutherford served Fairfax County Public Schools for 36 years with excellence and dedication. He began his professional career as a physical education teacher at Hutchinson Elementary School after a brief retirement in 2009. We never let people retire. Mr. Rutherford returned to FCPS as a substitute teacher at Hutchinson and Herndon Elementary Schools, and provided administrative support to Hutchinson's staff until his retirement at the end of the 2014-2015 school year. And whereas Mr. Rutherford taught his students the significance of physical fitness, a proper diet, and adequate rest to maintaining a healthy mind and body, he encouraged students to develop a positive competitive spirit and emphasized the importance of supporting classmates and showing consideration on sportsmanship to competitors. And whereas Mr. Rutherford was an advocate for his students and made a significant impact in their lives, he set high academic and behavioral expectations for his students and inspired them to focus on their goals, to work hard, and to commit themselves to become better scholars and athletes. And whereas Mr. Rutherford demonstrated integrity, fairness, and respect, and he expected nothing less than excellence from his colleagues, he was a valued faculty member and a talented mentor to novice teachers. And whereas Mr. Rutherford established positive relationships with students, staff, and the community, he was an enthusiastic champion of Hutchinson and attended school events and extracurricular activities to support students and faculty and to share in their successes. He had a strong work ethic and helped to keep the school a vibrant and effective learning environment for students. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fairfax County School Board, in recognition and appreciation of Stuart T. Rutherford's dedicated service to Hutchinson Elementary School and his valued contribution to Fairfax County Public Schools, hereby names the gymnasium at Hutchinson Elementary School the Stuart "Tim" Rutherford Gymnasium. I so move.
Second. All those in favor? It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. ... I invite all of Tim's supporters to come down, and Mr. Rutherford, come for a picture with your family. Congratulations.
Okay. So are we going to look right here? We're going to take four today. One, two, nice big smile. Three, and the last one. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. I've been wearing this for like a long time.
Thank you. I'm trying to support you for not see.
Okay. Congratulations again, Rutherford family and friends. Thanks for coming out. Item 3.01, Testimony on Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. At this time, we will open the public hearing on the Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. On October 22, 2015, staff presented a plan to the Board to meet Virginia Department of Education standards, which require each local school board to adopt biannually a Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan. The 2015 Division-Wide Comprehensive Plan includes pertinent data from the FY 2015 Student Achievement Goal Monitoring Reports, which highlights academics' essential life skills and responsibility to the community. Additional information is included about enrollment projections, technology, parent involvement, and cooperation with neighboring school divisions. Board action on the plan is scheduled for November 16. Tonight, we have one speaker. Please come forward to the lectern when I call your name. You will have three minutes to address the Board. The deputy clerk will start the timer when you begin to speak, and you'll be able to see the time remaining on the clock on the lectern. The buzzer will sound at the conclusion of your three minutes, and the speaker is George Becerra, who knows very well the rules of public speaking in this room.
That doesn't mean I don't get nervous. Good evening, Dr. Garza, and Board members, and leadership team. As you know, I wanted to talk about, I call it, the DCP. I'm getting old, but I've heard myself say this a couple times. So make sure that the DCP equals the strategic plan. I appreciate your comments last time, Dr. Garza, about that you still have to incorporate that. Definitely get that. I'm just trying to extend that conversation, that it goes down to your evaluation, and down to the regional assistant superintendent's evaluation, down to the principal's evaluation, down to, at the final minute level, the school improvement plan. If we get everything connected, we can get operational expectations going up from the way bottom, all the way to the state level, and we can, you know, have a cohesive unit. These are just observations. Oh, first of all, I'd like to say hi to Mr. Parrish. Thank you for your hard work and many years of service. A good friend of mine, it's kind of hard to talk on a subject that someone does, and I have some observations that maybe he would not like, but we've had a very cordial relationship over the years. Other aspect, I've read from the 68 pages, and as you go, guys know I'm not an educator, so these are my just first snacks at it. The data that was used, I've seen that most of it does the '13 and '14 data. I think the '14 and '15 data has come out in the summer, and although I think it is certified maybe this month, so I don't know if it got certified earlier this month or just recently, but I wish maybe if that would have been included in the... I don't know when it's due. If it's due tomorrow, I understand, but if it's due at the end of November, it would have had time to put that new greatest and latest data. This comment is more to Mr. Stork or to the Board, is you guys put in pass rates again. I think the issue, last year, you had pass rates. Why didn't you have the average scale score? I think if you showed, and that would affect the closing achievement gap, you know, in terms of, you know, we really didn't widen. I mean, but we did lower scores with white and Asian students, but in terms of the minority students, it did not, you know, widen as, if you're looking at the raw, the average scale score. That doctor, I forgot who the strategic, or the testing evaluation, right? And in terms of the report in general, I didn't feel like there was next steps. It was just there, and what's next? I just didn't feel it. It might be there, you guys could talk about tonight, and you guys might have a plan of what next steps, and I just didn't read it from the report. And the last and final thing is Appendix A, page 63 out of the 65. I appreciate the third bullet item, or the second on Office of Communication and Community Relations, and it mentions MSAOC. Out of all the other things, it mentions department's offices. So if MSAOC is the head charge people for closing achievement gap, then I'd advocate again that we need some more resources for our group, and more importantly, MSAOC has always said for years, there should be a central or a department for closing achievement gap, because the way it sounds, that you elevated us to a certain extreme level. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Becerra. Item 4.01, Citizen Participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The School Board will not hear state...
or a department for my, for closing achievement gap, because the way it sounds, that you elevated us to a certain extreme level. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Becerra. Item 4.01, citizen participation. Speakers are requested to limit their remarks to not more than three minutes. The school board will not hear statements involving issues that have been scheduled for public hearings, such as capital improvement program, budget, and boundaries, or personal attacks on any person. Complaints regarding individual students or school-based employees should be directed to the appropriate school principal or other school official. If the concern is a group concern, please consider appointing a spokesperson, and while the spokesperson is speaking, those in support may stand to show their support. Tonight, three citizens have signed up to address the board, Mr. Steve Greenberg, Leslie Herman, and Lauren Malone. Mr. Greenberg?
Dr. Garza, Chairman Hines, legendary Mr. Press, esteemed school board members. I am Steve Greenberg, I'm president of the Fairfax County Federation of Teachers. I represent outstanding educators in SCPS whose focus is on our students, educating, protecting, and caring for them daily. My members and I are proud members of your premier workforce, which is one of the items I'll be addressing tonight. First of all, I'm glad to see everyone less busy with fundraisers and political functions now, so perhaps we can better focus on the work ahead. In regards to strategic plan, goal three, premier workforce, let me remind you that we began this work quite some time ago. In fact, when I read overarching strategy eight in this area, recruit and retain high-quality employees who are valued, respected, and rewarded for their efforts, I reflected upon our workforce five years ago when I first became president. It was then that our teachers' workload situation was unbearable. We were certainly also underpaid back then as well, but the unreasonable workload demands on top of the lack of pay and professional disrespect, that was just too much. We lost a lot of great teachers back then. If it had not been for board members like Patty Reed, Tina Hohn, and Sandy Evans and their advocacy for our teachers in dealing with the problem, I don't know what would have happened. Might have been a work to the rule or worse. Thankfully, we elected a new school board who then hired a competent superintendent who was also sensitive, and the workload issues got better. As you continue to implement your strategic plan, Dr. Garza, please remind your administrators of our good work together and the history on this. High-quality employees whose time, efforts are valued and respected stay, those who are not respected leave because they can and they deserve better. We continue to lose great teachers today, but now it's based more upon financial considerations. With the new increased costs for healthcare, our SCPS employees are going backwards in regards to their take-home pain and ability to survive. This board needs to focus seriously on that problem as we approach the budget for FY 2017. I have absolute confidence in this school board, the next school board, and certainly that superintendent sitting over there in regards to that. Speaking of outstanding SCPS employees, please know how much SEFT appreciates our outstanding science teachers. Mr. Duffy's back there. They are some of the most competent and motivated in this country. Please also know how much we appreciate the entire Woodson community and how they rallied around our students and teachers recently. When things are not good, there are mostly two kinds of people responding. Those looking to make things worse and use the situation to their own advantage, and those looking to help fix the problem and keep it from occurring again. Your Woodson community really rocks, Ms. McLaughlin. Finally, an early happy Veterans Day to all of our veterans. Although I am delighted to help with a variety of veterans' activities at my school with my third graders to honor this important holiday, I'm still baffled as to how that would keep us from actually honoring the day by actually honoring the day and not having school. Unfortunately, my members are not the only ones weighing in on this, Ms. Schultz, and others must care more about Columbus, who by the way was not a good guy. Or soccer tournaments, I guess that's not very encouraging, to say the least. Mostly, thank you for caring about your premier workforce and for your service to our school system tonight, good night.
Thank you. It seems that our speaker clock is not working so that the speaker can see it. So what we'll do, we have a clock up here, and maybe, yeah, when we get close. It's working now? At the, oh, I'm sorry, the podium's working? Never mind, okay. Next speaker is Leslie Herman.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board, and Dr. Garza. My name is Leslie Herman, and I am the Director of Parks and Recreation for the Town of Vienna. I come before you this evening to thank you for considering the Town of Vienna's easement request for the Vienna Community Center renovation and expansion project, and respectfully ask that the Fairfax County School Board waive all fees and associated costs in respect to the deed of easement. This permanent easement will accommodate stormwater management facilities, water facilities, electrical utility service, as well as a temporary construction easement. We anticipate construction to last approximately 18 months. I understand that waivers are only given if there is a direct benefit to a specific school board-owned property and/or the operation of the school system. In exchange for the easement fee waiver, the town is willing to partner with Vienna Elementary School by providing access to the community center for a multiple, multitude of uses during the school hours. The community center has a theater, a new full-size gymnasium, a secondary gym, and many meeting rooms. If there ever was a need of the Vienna Elementary School, whether for special requests for auxiliary programming space, a secondary means of shelter in the event of a heating or cooling loss, or as a designated emergency shelter, use of rooms for staff trainings and retreats, special events or activities such as the school's science fair, the community, Vienna Community Center would be accessible to fill those needs at no cost. The expansion and renovation of the community center can provide unique opportunities for a valuable partnership between Vienna Elementary School and the Town of Vienna. We are your neighbors, and we stand at the ready to help the Vienna Elementary School any way we can. These two facilities that are located right next to each other serve the same community. We welcome the opportunity to form a partnership with Vienna Elementary School and to help meet their needs. On a side note, the Town of Vienna has waived fees and associated costs for various FCPS construction activities in the past. In closing, I believe that the Town of Vienna has demonstrated cooperation and benefits to the Fairfax County School Board and the Vienna Elementary School in support of waiving all fees and associated costs in the respect for the deed of easement. I thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Herman. Item 4.02, student representative matters, I call on Mr. Press.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So to say the least, since our last board meeting, I've been pretty busy. And I'm going to spend a lot of time tonight saying thank yous, and, you know, in my opinion, we don't hear that quite enough. I'll begin by saying thank you to the leadership classes and the leadership teachers at Fairfax High School, Jeb Stewart High School, Madison High School, and Lee High School for allowing me to come by and visit. Of course, I get to visit Madison every day, but this Tuesday was a special occasion as we marked our annual chili cook-off, and I was fortunate enough, in conjunction with that event, to judge the chili. And I can, I can say that not only are our teachers talented in the classroom, they're also very talented in the kitchen. Again, to go back on those student, student engagement visits at those, at those three schools, I'd also like to mention I visited Woodson the day of our last board meeting. What impressive and incredible students we have, and it's really inspiring for me to be able to go back into those communities and hear from the people that all of the work that this board does impacts every day. I'd like to say a special thank you to Ms. Evans, who joined me on my visit to Jeb Stewart High School. We had a really engaging discussion there, and we were in fact able to sit in on some of the ESOL classes, Strategies for Success, and some of the project momentum work that we're doing, and it was extremely, extremely impressive. So thank you to the Stewart community in particular. I'd like to mention a common thread that I've heard at almost every school that I've been to. Whenever I'm there, I always ask about the student workload that our, that our students are dealing with. And I inform them that on the books of Fairfax County Public Schools, there's a regulation that says homework should not exceed two hours per night. And I am not pleased to report that I haven't seen one hand go up when I ask if that regulation is a reality in our schools. Now, I understand that that sampling of students are generally very active in the school community and tend to be our very high-achieving students, but that's alarming. We need to make sure that our students are provided an environment where they can be mentally healthy, and when our students are suffering from excessive workloads, we can't ensure that. And we're not doing our job as a school system. So, good news. I was able to join some of our school psychology staff at Yale University a couple of weekends ago to join Mark Brackett and his staff, along with the Born This Way Foundation, at the Emotion Revolution Summit to hear the results of a national survey from students across the country in regards to how they feel when they go to school and how they want to feel when they go to school. The data was really eye-opening and very interesting to see the parallels that can be drawn between FCPS and many of our peer divisions across the country. I'd like to say a special thank you to the Fairfax County Council PTAs who permitted me to speak at their diversity conference this year. It was really a great opportunity for us to hear the voices of so many different communities in FCPS, be able to speak about just how much incredible work the students are doing in schools to embrace the diversity that they, that they have. I'd also like to say thank you to Ms. Reed, who allowed me to attend her budget work, pardon me, her Budget Town Hall on October 29th. It was a great, a great discussion. On the budget theme, I'd also like to proudly announce that the Budget Task Force, which I'm fortunate enough to sit on and convey the student voice on, concluded the main body of its work last night. And for those community members who may be watching, I encourage you to either attend or watch the school board work session this coming Monday on the budget. The presentation of that data is going to be a very lively discussion, I imagine, as we present the community's perspective, the perspective of that Budget Task Force on Monday. Finally, I'd like to wrap up by saying an extremely heartfelt thank you to the first responders who responded to our crisis at Woodson High School this past Friday. Their professionalism, integrity, and prompt response to that crisis was incredible, and we can't thank them enough. I'd also like to mention just how astonished I was by how the students rallied together, came together in a community that has been through so much in recent years, and pulled through and supported each other and fostered a community that really should be an example for many, for many of our communities in FCPS. To our students out there and our teachers, I'd like to congratulate you all on a wonderful end to the first grading period, our first quarter. You know, I understand it can be stressful, as we all, as we all know, too often those, those dates get packed with exams and common assessments and whatnot, and, you know, I would like to formally ask this board to consider ways of scheduling that, and I'm hoping that with our, that, with a potential waiver from the King's Dominion law, we'll be able to do this in a way that the end of the quarter does not fall in the same week that early college deadlines do, because I've heard from seniors from across the county regarding that, and it's been a very alarming trend. Finally, tonight, I'd like to announce that thank you to Dr. Garza and the special services staff for allowing us to move forward with our student mental health working group. This group will be tasked with firstly, discussing in-school factors around mental health; secondly, discussing best practices that we're already doing; and thirdly, putting, compiling that and putting it together into a coherent and comprehensive list of recommendations, some of those relating to policy, others to best practices that we can share with other schools. So I'm really looking forward to getting that work started here in the next month. A few events coming up, I'm very much looking forward to our all-day work sessions on Monday. We're going to be discussing important presentations on enrollment and budget. I'm also looking forward to joining Mr. McElveen and students from around the county at his student advocacy workshop, and I'll be planning more visits to schools around the county in the second quarter. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Press. Item 4.03, strategic plan, goal three, premier workforce, I call on Dr. Garza.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Very pleased tonight to introduce to you tonight the goal three report. There is a little bit of a theme, you may have noticed throughout the evening. We introduced our new Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, certainly that was cause for celebration. Then we celebrated the students in our Teach for America program, which we hope to build and expand upon into the future. And then tonight, our goal three report. As one component of our long-range strategic plan ignite, one of our major goals and a major priority of this school system was to make sure that in every aspect of our organization, that we're hiring and supporting and valuing great employees who are well-equipped to serve all of our children equally well. And I'm excited that this is our first report for our new strategic plan, where we've, I think our team has worked very hard to provide meaningful data to the board around this particular goal. Moving forward tonight, after we, we have today posted as new business, we have the work session that's posted again on Monday, so you all will have an opportunity to discuss it in more depth, and then again posted as final business. Our third goal is about premier workforce. We commit to invest in our employees, encourage innovation, and celebrate success. And so tonight, I'm very, very pleased tonight to introduce Susan Quinn and all of her wonderful team in HR and this report. And moving forward, I'd like for you to be thinking about the data that's included, other things that we can include in the future, but I think it's some great, great work. In the past, some of this information has been provided to you in varied places, in varied times throughout the, throughout the school year. So I think another advantage is to have as much of this together. So I'm excited tonight to turn it over to Susan Quinn, who'll introduce and provide you an overview of the report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Garza, and good evening. I just want to point out that I am wearing premier workforce blue. If you know, in the strategic plan, premier workforce is color-coded as blue. So, anyway, good evening. As Dr. Garza mentioned, this is the first of four reports that we will demonstrate the progress of our work toward achieving the desired outcomes within the strategic plan. I want to take a moment to explain the format of this report, which is similar to how subsequent reports will work. And Dr. Garza covered some of this, but tonight, we have the presentation, which will be followed by a work session on Monday and school board action on November 16th. Note that during the work session, we will not present this presentation again, so you actually have to pay attention tonight. But we will have the PowerPoint for reference, and that will provide us with some ample time for discussion on Monday. We have been very busy since July, when the Ignite Plan was approved just a few months ago. The monitoring metrics in this report will establish baseline data to serve as a starting point for future evaluations. Please note that work is ongoing, some of the metrics will be a work in progress, and we are continuing to refine our processes and systems in order to report on all the metrics. Okay, there we go. The Ignite Plan contains four strategic goals: student success, caring culture, premier workforce, and resource stewardship. And again, tonight, we'll focus our work on work that supports goal three, premier workforce. It is fitting that we start with this goal, as majority of FCPS budget is, supports its people, and our employees are the heart of this organization. A talented workforce is any employer's most crucial resource, especially in education. Goal three has two overarching strategies: overarching strategy eight and overarching strategy nine. Overarching strategy eight is to recruit and retain high-quality employees who are valued, respected, and rewarded for their efforts. This strategy has four desired outcomes: recruit, hire, and retain employees to achieve a premier workforce; achieve and preserve a culture of equity and fairness that will be representative of the demographics of Fairfax County; FCPS will embrace and value innovation; employees will benefit from a competitive compensation package. The board has identified seven monitoring metrics to support the desired outcomes in this overarching strategy. The majority of this presentation will report on these metrics individually. So if you look at the top of this slide, you will see the metric in a colored box. The color and content of that box will change when the metric changes. So the first metric is the benchmark report on FCPS compensation packages. We are currently in the process of conducting a compensation study. The goal of the study is to develop a new compensation model designed to recruit and retain a high-quality workforce. Some of the specifics included looking at how to differentiate pay based on critical needs of our school system. So the study will be conducted in two phases. The first phase is to include the market place pay comparison, and the second phase will include a strategic compensation design. The first phase is currently underway. To date, we have developed and distributed a comprehensive survey to local districts and governments. We will also be looking at data from the federal government and from the private sector. The unified scale covers positions that are not included in the teacher and instructional assistant scales. The survey seeks information not only on pay schedules, but supplements, stipends, promotion practices, and medical and retirement plan offerings. Findings and, findings and results are expected later this month. Phase two of the study will begin in late winter. We will be exploring and evaluating compensation models and start to define the district's compensation strategy. Some of the specifics included looking at how to differentiate pay based on critical needs of our school system. So the study will be conducted in two phases. The first phase is to include the market place pay comparison, and the second phase will include the strategic compensation design. The first phase is currently underway. To date, we have developed and distributed a comprehensive survey to local districts and governments. We will also be looking at data from the federal government and from the private sector. The unified scale covers positions that are not included in the teacher and instructional assistant scales. The survey seeks information not only on pay schedules, but supplements, stipends, promotion practices, and medical and retirement plan offerings. Findings and results are expected later this month. Phase two of the study will begin in late winter. We will be exploring and evaluating compensation models and start to define the district's compensation strategy. All employees will be surveyed with focus groups to follow, and the focus groups will have representatives from employee groups and other relevant stakeholders to further clarify survey findings and identify priorities. And we are scheduled to have a report with findings and recommendations by mid to late While looking to improve our compensation structure, we also want to measure the level of satisfaction employees have with our current compensation package, as indicated in the employee exit and climate surveys. The employee exit survey was implemented division-wide this past January. The survey is sent by email to employees who voluntarily leave FCPS, and from January through September, 577 employees out of 1,300 responded to the exit survey. That's a response rate of 43.5%. This is a significant improvement over the pilot that was conducted last fall. A couple of key findings: 70% of those exiting have fewer than seven years of service. 89% were satisfied with their experience and would consider working for us again. We are also working on identifying a division-wide climate survey that can be administered to all of our employees. This will measure the worksite environment, organizational culture, to improve employee engagement and retention. Now, some of the top reasons for separation, this is for our licensed personnel, they are personal, salary, and support from leadership, followed by workload, commute time, and burnout. Nearly 57% of the 459 licensed respondents said that salary had some influence on their decision to leave. Almost 30% said it influenced their decision a great deal. The next chart is the same chart, but for support and instructional assistance. Again, the top reason is personal, and then similar to teachers, the next reason is salary. Unlike teachers, the next highest item was lack of advancement for opportunities, which could be attributed to pay as well. Now, we just reported on some of the reasons why teachers leave. Now let's look at our retention rates. Because national research focuses on teachers, within their first five years, we have compared our retention rates in five-year cohorts. Recent research indicates that retention rates are improving. The current national rate is 59%, as compared to 50% over a decade ago. The dark blue bar in this chart represents our most recent cohort. The orange bar is the cohort from 2006 and 2007, and then the aqua bar, which is the last bar, is the national average. So looking at the chart progression, you can see that most recent five-year cohort tracked well above the national average until year five, when it fell to the national average of 59%. The next metric, we have provided the filled and existing vacancies for the critical field areas. As a point of reference, we have filled 971 vacancies in critical fields. We are down to 102 vacancies in October. We are not alone in having vacancies in our teaching positions. Across the country, districts are struggling with shortages of teachers. Fewer people are going into teaching. In the last four years, there has been a 30% drop in people preparing to be teachers. And the latest data for FCPS indicates that upper grades for general elementary education may also be a hard-to-staff area, which has not been an area that we've been challenged with. So you could kind of see how the shortage in teachers nationwide is impacting us as well. We will need to strengthen our recruitment efforts, and we'll have to focus on retaining our already highly-trained and qualified staff. So in addition to our focus in the critical field areas, the intensive Project Momentum schools were given extra support. Those schools had the opportunity to review early contracted teachers before other schools. Additionally, they did not receive any de-staffed teachers, which allowed principals to select all their teachers. We have eight schools that are fully staffed, with four schools staffed at 98%, with the remaining schools slightly below the 98% fill rate. Some positions have been filled since this report, and some vacancies are actually intentional until the final staffing is complete. We will continue to collaborate with principals to deliberately deploy teachers early to our high-need schools. So what are we doing differently to recruit? We are redoubling our efforts to build and expand our talent pool. Some of these strategies include offering early contracts, maybe offering those contracts on the spot in the recruitment trips, and recruiting from student-teacher pool, recruiting from multiple pathways, expand university partnerships, and use our current employees as informal recruiters, build an internal pipeline from our current pool of instructional assistants, and advocate for change in flexible teacher training and licensure requirements. Recruiting highly-qualified applicants is a division-wide challenge, and the actions in the strategic plan will position us to become an employer of choice. I apologize, I'm going to go to the next slide first, and then go back to the other slide. The metric show, this metric shows how well our targeted diversity recruiting is working. Over the past several years, diversity among non-school-based administrators and teachers has improved. Diversity in school-based administrators regressed slightly to 23.7% from 24.1% over this period, with a high of 25.5% in 2011. Teachers have shown the biggest gain in moving from 15.4% diverse in 2010 to 17.4% in 2015. This is compared to 14.6% nationally. While we're ahead of the national trend, FCPS students are 60% diverse, and research shows that having a diverse teacher pool improves student achievement. So Fairfax continues to recruit a high-quality workforce. So I'm going to go back a slide, so we can see some of the targeted recruitment initiatives that we're putting in place. As the student population is becoming more diverse, it is critical that we diversify our workforce. We are making a concerted effort to increase the presence of underrepresented teaching staff through direct outreach and partnerships. Some strategies we will employ in the coming year are advertising vacancies more broadly, creating and implementing an online toolkit to ensure consistency and fairness in the screening and selection process, expanding Teach for Tomorrow. This is a program that you heard about just earlier tonight, to recruit a pipeline of middle and high school students interested in teaching. As an employer, we want to ensure that our workforce are paid a living wage. We are making progress in this area. The current living wage, as documented by Fairfax County, is unchanged from last year at $13.13 per hour. With recent salary increases, the total number of employees below the living wage dropped from 972 employees to 758 in 2015. The largest group of employees impacted is food service workers. So the number of qualified applicants per vacancy is critically important, is a critically important metric to help us achieve the desired outcomes of Goal Three. This is, however, a work in progress, and the metric will be reported next year, as the current applicant tracking system is not configured to accurately provide the information. And some of the challenges that we're facing with the current system include duplicating applicants as they apply for multiple positions, identifying highly-qualified applicants, differentiating internal and external candidates, and timely deletion of candidates who are no longer available. The current business processes are also being reviewed and redesigned to allow the reporting of this important metric in next year's report. This was the last metric for overarching strategy eight. Now I'm moving on to overarching strategy nine, which is the second overarching strategy in Goal Three. Invest in growth and leadership opportunities for all employees, encourage innovation, and celebrate success. This strategy has two desired outcomes: dynamic professional development opportunities will be available for all employees; FCPS will develop and maintain a performance evaluation process that is valued by all employees. There are three monitoring metrics to demonstrate the work of this strategy, and so let's go right into the first metric. I believe we all recognize the complexity and importance of providing feedback to our employees. This past school year, approximately 7,000 teachers were evaluated, with 40% of those rated highly effective. Approximately 275 school-based administrators were evaluated, with over 50% rated as highly effective. This will serve as baseline data as we continue our efforts in improving the performance evaluation systems to provide ongoing, consistent, and meaningful feedback. A comprehensive assessment of professional development is scheduled for next year, and will include examining professional development quality and alignment to the district's initiatives and best practices. One of the most critical tools in improving schools is building the knowledge and skills of educators. The results of the post-professional development survey, given to over 1,200 employees, show that FCPS employees believe the professional development received has relevance and utility to their work, is of high quality, and that they are applying or intend to apply their new skills and knowledge. The ratings in all three areas have improved from the prior year. This completes the reporting of the monitoring metrics for this overarching strategy. The next slide highlights some additional work that supports Goal Three. We continue to support a robust employee recognition program to celebrate our successes. Last year, we highlighted the service of over 4,000 employees through the recognition and awards programs. Excellence Awards were given to 23 employees, celebrated FCPS honors. This is a one-of-a-kind event that distinguishes FCPS from others. Informal recognition comes through FCPS CARES. Over 1,700 employees and community members use this tool to acknowledge the excellent customer service and hard work of our staff. In addition, we are working toward opportunities to recognize innovation. We are currently exploring a new award category to recognize novel or cost-savings programs and practices. We have also started to explore options to help best present true compensation. This information will educate our employees on their non-salary rewards and benefits, which will clearly show the value of employment with FCPS. Another major project underway is an online time management system. This will allow all employees to electronically submit their time worked and request an approved leave. We also made significant improvements to the hiring process by leveraging technology. Onboarding program is accessible from any internet browser, as well as any mobile device, and our newest member of the team went through the onboarding process and thought it was very easy to use. So over 4,600 employees completed onboarding at their convenience to complete the required forms and training in the last 10 months. The applicant tracking system has been expanded to allow real-time access for administrators to view eligible-for-hire resumes. This means that we have 377 administrators trained that may screen candidates directly. They don't have to wait for an HR specialist to forward those resumes. The hiring process was expedited this school year, as you know, and we began hiring teachers nearly two months earlier than the prior year. There is much more exciting work going on, but what I've shared only just highlights the key activities in this important work in achieving the desired outcomes for Goal Three. So this completes the reporting of Goal Three, premier workforce. I am going to spend a little bit more time, so on the next few slides, we will provide you with an update on our progress in monitoring and regulating class sizes, along with how we have utilized the staffing reserve. So effective this school year, we've implemented a new regulation to address large elementary class sizes. The regulation provided guidelines for standard class sizes for kindergarten, grades one through three, and grades four through six. As part of the FY 2016 budget, we allocated a total of $3.9 million to address large class sizes. Through October, we have allocated 107.5 teacher and instructional assistant positions, valued at $6.5 million. And prior to allocating any additional positions from the reserve, region assistant superintendents and human resources examined multiple, examined multiple options, and this process started this past summer and will continue through the end of the second quarter. This was truly a collaborative effort with the departments of HR, IT, and financial services, as well as region, assist, region offices, and individual schools. We had to monitor the school configuration of classes and the projected enrollment throughout the summer and fall. So here are the results of the application of the new regulation. For kindergarten, of the 559 total classes, 99 classes, or 18%, are below 20 students, with 460 classes with 20 to 28 students, with a district average of 22.6 students. So for kindergarten, we really did not make any significant changes. This was a standard that we had previously, meaning that we had a teacher and an instructional assistant allocated for each class. For grades one through three, division-wide, we have nearly 1,900 classes. Nearly 75% of the classes with 20 to 27 students, and classes with 28 to 30 students are provided with additional support. The region assistant superintendents worked with the principals to ensure appropriate support was provided. So for grades four through six, we have a total of 1,639 classes. Nearly 88% of those classes have 20 to 30 students. Again, fourth through sixth grade classes with 31 through 35 students are provided additional support, and similar to grades one through three, the region assistant superintendents are working with principals to ensure the appropriate support is provided. So what are the factors that influence class size? The most significant is the distribution or groupings of students at each grade level. We all know that our students do not come to us in nice, neat, round numbers at each grade level, so balancing class size is a difficult task for our principals. One of the ways we address this challenge is to allocate positions from the staffing reserve. Some other factors that influence class size Some other factors that influence class size include the state K3 class size cap ranging from 19 to 24 students per class. We have a total of 43 schools with the K3 designation. This means that when we are one student over the cap, we must allocate an additional teacher. Needs-based staffing also influences class sizes, as well as some of the program offerings, such as foreign language immersion and advanced academics. Not as common, but the last two items also impact class sizes. Some schools do not have the building capacity to physically add another classroom, and with teacher vacancies, some schools determine that a slightly larger class, led by a teacher, would be more beneficial than having a long-term substitute. We will be providing a detailed class size report by region, as well as comparisons to last year's class sizes in Monday's work session. So this chart summarizes what we have used in the staffing reserve to date. We started the year with 19.62 million with 283 positions. This includes the one-time funding of $800,000. The staffing reserve is used to true up any differences in projected and actual enrollments. We have polled 157 positions from those schools where enrollment came in lower than projected. As stated in the new regulation, we continue to poll positions until the 10th instructional day after the start of school. Acknowledging that schools could potentially add students throughout the year, if the actual enrollment was within five students from qualifying for another teacher, those positions were left in the schools to reduce any disruptions later. In individual schools where enrollment came in higher than projected, 179 positions were allocated to address that. So far, 61 positions were allocated to address special education and unique needs, and as I've mentioned earlier, 107.5 positions were allocated to address class size requirements related to the new regulation. This leaves us with approximately 9,092 positions in the staffing reserve. Positions will continue to be allocated as additional needs arise, and if no additional positions are approved, the $9 million will be recognized as one-time savings in the current year's budget. We will also provide additional information on how class size resources were allocated by region in Monday's work session. That concludes the report on the class size update, and I just want to take this opportunity. I know Dr. Garza has thanked the team, but they've done amazing work to put this report together, so I just wanted to take the opportunity to thank the team. Okay?
Thank you so much. Lot of data, lot of information. Thank you very much. Very good to see. Now, I just want to remind board members that we have a work session on Monday, November 9th, at which we will have plenty of time to make comments, ask questions. So for now, if we could kind of keep our comments to clarifying questions, that would help us move along. So I have Mr. Velkoff, followed by Ms. McLaughlin and Mrs. Strauss.
I just want to express my appreciation for the report. This is a sea change, Mrs. Quinn, from what we have gotten before with the standard stoplight charts. I feel like I got so much more information and actionable information, so I'm extremely grateful. I'm seeing our processes working. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
Yes, Ms. Heinz, because Ms. Reed and I will be the meeting managers on Monday. We did meet earlier today with Ms. Quinn and really wanted to kind of make sure the board understood that the value of tonight, by having the PowerPoint presentation, is that we are not going to review it again at the work session. The focus is absolutely going to be on the board digesting what this report has to say. But I did also ask Ms. Quinn that staff be prepared to really present to the board what are the key elements within the report that they would like for us to consider and then provide feedback to Superintendent Garza. And I know one of the things that we have asked for Monday is that the slide where we're talking about FCPS's workforce diversity trends, that we also get the data on the national trends, so that we can have a better understanding of how FCPS compares nationally. So even though we want to continue improving on that, it's good to know where we are benchmarked against the nation. But otherwise, I do also want to express my appreciation to Ms. Quinn and Dr. Garza. I believe in the past, we had the old monitoring reports, and this is now going to really serve in that new role, and I am very excited at looking at what it has really evolved into. So I think this will really enable the board to do much more substantive work with you and your amazing leadership team.
Thank you for that, and I will tell you, we'll continue to listen to board members, you know, on Monday particularly, some tonight certainly, but the in-depth discussion on Monday, you know, we'll be capturing notes. We want this process to provide our board members and our community with really meaningful information around this important goal. And I will tell you that I think it's important for the public to know that not only do we have the PowerPoint, there's a written report online as well, so individuals in the community that are interested in a little bit more of the detail, and some of it that Ms. Quinn provided in her presentation is reflected there as well. Thank you.
Mrs. Strauss?
Thank you very much for this report, and I do like the direction that it's going in. I have a couple of questions. The special education count doesn't come in until December?
Correct.
And how do you predict that this will have an impact on the actual position count?
So I think earlier I mentioned that positions will continue to be allocated, and from now until about February, most of the positions that we allocate relate to special education. So we will continue to do that, but at this point, I don't know how many more positions will be needed, but as needs arise, we will continue to allocate the positions.
Okay, and then the other is positions that have been unfilled because we couldn't find somebody?
We are working diligently to improve our applicant pool, but it is a very challenging task. So we're doing our best, and we do have long-term subs in some of those classrooms, but, you know, we are working diligently every day trying to fill those positions.
Right.
And just as a, some of the positions, we have kept faking unintentionally, because as we have special education enrollment that is not counted until December, there are some positions in some schools that they may not need, and it creates the higher number in the number of vacancies.
And we'll talk more in depth about in the future. I mean, we started to accelerate our hiring to try to prevent some of this. I think differentiated compensation, which is part of the strategic plan, particularly in high-need schools, I think will help us moving forward, but we know there's some more things, early contracts, so we know there's some more that we can do to try to prevent. Our goal is to have every classroom filled by the time we start school with a highly qualified teacher.
Great, because I think you had mentioned earlier that for the first time, we're beginning to see some difficulty in filling positions at the elementary level.
Correct.
At the upper grades. And I've never seen that before, where we've out, where we have the money, but we can't find the people. It's a little, it's alarming. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
So mainly just wanted to say how pleased I am with this report. You know, when it's the first one out of the box, you know, you always wonder what it's going to look like, and the transitioning from the OEs and the SAGs to this new way of measuring it. So I think it, you have a lot of great critical information in here, as well as you've hit the really important highlights, and as somebody who likes a lot of data, I, at least at first read through both the PowerPoint and the report, I'm hard-pressed to see things that I'm missing. I'm going to read it again, but be that as it may, I mainly just wanted to congratulate you on a good, you know, a really excellent first report. My only question is, Monday, we're going to get more details on the class size, is that correct?
Yes.
So kind of a school-by-school or?
Yes, school-by-school by region.
Excellent. Well, excellent job on this first report.
Well, thank you, and it's the report that you receive on Mondays, what we've been providing you annually by school. If you remember, that's a pretty thick report, so you will get that on Monday.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Reed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Very good presentation, and I agree, this is the kind of information that we really need, and it's tied to our strategic plan, so it makes a lot of sense. The one question I just wanted to ask tonight on Slide 30, where we talk about the staffing reserve balance as of October, 92 positions, $9 million. You know, relatively speaking, is that a good thing? Is that, you know, worrisome? You know, how does that compare to other years?
For this year, it's a good thing, but however, you know, in some years, depending on how accurate our projections are, at this time, we may have depleted majority of our staffing reserve, but I think a couple of years ago, we did have some available funding in the staffing reserve that we recognized in one of the quarterly reviews. So this is good, and I'm anticipating that we will still have funds available at the end of the year to be able to realize as savings.
I will tell you on this note, and we could talk about it further Monday, but you can see how costly it is to work on class size. You know, and I think that's what's illustrated in that chart, and I would be the first to acknowledge, and I think many of you agree with me, we're still not there yet with our regulation. We need to lower it even more, but you can see how that translates into significant, significant dollars.
Mrs. Schultz?
So on, maybe I have the same question in a slightly different way as Ms. Reed. On the second line where we have the positions returned due to lower actual enrollment, is that lower enrollment in a classroom, or is that the lower enrollment overall? Because how many, how many, we wound up with 2,115 fewer students or thereabouts?
That is lower enrollment for that particular school. So we rerun the formulas on that actual enrollment, and if, due to lower enrollment, if they're losing a teacher position, we have been polling those positions and adding it back to the staffing reserve.
But that's in a specific classroom at a specific school, or that's the school overall?
At a specific school overall, not necessarily in a specific class, because we look at staffing at the school level.
So what I don't understand is, I mean, on the one hand, I think that's great that we return the positions, but that's $10.3 million. I don't understand what happened to, at 2,100 students, at roughly 14,000 bucks a pop, that's $30 million. Where's that $30 million?
So I could explain it further at the work session. I'll try my best here.
Okay.
Because of the way we calculate staffing at the individual school, I think I'm just going to use a simple example we used earlier today. If a school was projected to have 600 students and 30 teachers, if the enrollment comes in 10, let's say 10 students below that 600, the staffing formulas may not necessarily generate something less than the original 30 positions.
I understand that, I understand that, but my question is, is that we had 300, basically 319 additional positions for increased enrollment, 318-point something, for additional enrollment projected from the spring into this fall. And so if we, if we were projecting 2,115 more students, and that's, the equivalent of that is 318 additional positions, then if there are 10 fewer students in one school, and we don't change that funding formula, that has nothing to do with the $30 million in additional funding in those positions, because we're not reallocating one of those positions from the additional, you know, we had a budget that increased because of enrollment.
Correct.
Enrollment projection. Those positions, those 318 positions, if we wound up with 2,000, over 2,100 fewer students, where are those 318 positions, and why don't we have another $30 million in addition to the 10?
Ms. Quinn, maybe we'll do this, since we were really just looking for clarifying questions right now.
Well, that's a pretty big clarifying question.
Yeah, there's a line somewhere here between clarifying questions and discussion, and maybe we could get a quick answer and move on?
Well, I think it will be pertinent on Monday, too, because we're looking at school-by-school enrollment. You remember, that's another topic that's on Monday, so I think, you know, the question, I think, is a very good one, but I think we could probably answer it on Monday if it's okay.
So I would say that this is going to be an integral part of my question, and Ms. Michael and I already began this discussion at our last work session, and I still haven't seen any resolution between how we wind up with the 10.3, and the 10.3 is what was pulled out. I'm talking about the 318 that we had, that we had projected that we would need in addition to what we already had.
I think we fully understand your question, and I think we can handle it on Monday.
Okay, great.
Without any problem.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Stork?
Thank you. Slide number 14, you talk about Project Momentum Schools, and told school staff that 98% are higher. I don't, I have to admit, I don't know generally what our average, or maybe our norm, is for school staffing in October. Is it 99.9% or is it 90%? Is there some kind of number that I can compare the 98% to as a standard that is being met or not?
Obviously, our goal is 100%, but I could get you that information. Oh, sorry. I will get you that information. I don't have that information with me tonight.
Okay. Second clarifying question is that, and I know this is in general part of the study, but I just want to make sure that I understand how that's being considered, if it's an open-ended part of the study that the consultants are doing, but it's referenced in here, and I tried to find the spot, I couldn't, but about different compensation options that'll be looked at at least, or considered, or the consultants are supposed to bring back. I mean, I know one of them is, we've talked for years about differentiating, sorry for hard-to-fill positions, I know it's one. Obviously, schools that frankly maybe have more challenging students or situations that need additional, is there something that's, they've been specifically charged to do, to bring back, or is it just, these are issues that they're going to generally explore what other systems do and bring back how they do? I mean, is there, I mean, I don't have to have an answer today, but I'm just trying to make sure I have the question framed so that I get something clear, or maybe get a copy of the RFI or their response, the consultant's response in terms of their proposal itself about what they're intending to do.
Sure, we have asked the consultants to look at various different models that are used throughout the country, and we will be looking those, but one of the critical items that we have asked them to look at is how to differentiate pay for those critical fields or high-need schools. So that's something that they will be bringing back to us.
And that's, so it's an open-ended, you've asked this as an open-ended question, and they're going to give you lots of different?
They're also benchmarking that data. So based on the information that we receive from other localities, and based on the needs of our system, there will be a recommendation on how to provide that differentiation.
Okay, and then that would be part of what's presented to us about when, or maybe to the current board at that time? Is that a, I know it's a winter kind of presentation of some sort, is that, because the way I read it is that it's a November completion, and they're going to, you all will be looking at this and then coming back to?
The scope of work that we've asked them to do is voluminous. I mean, it's going to be a lot of information, and I think it will provide us a roadmap for the future and certainly present this board. for the future, and certainly present this board, maybe the future board, some, I think, interesting options in terms of how do we situate ourselves in the best, on the best footing for today, but into the future as well. But we've had to break it up into two phases, so that we could get some information as early as possible. Ordinarily, it, they would take six, seven months, and then we'd get a final report. We did ask them to break it up, so we could have some information later this month, but the full comprehensive report, we don't believe will be fully completed until spring.
And so do you see it impacting or affecting at all the work that you'll be doing as far as the budget for 2017?
I think some, because I certainly think that, I know they're going to say our teacher compensation and our teacher salary schedule is way too low. I mean, I think we know that's going to be very clear. So I think some of the things they'll provide us in November, but that's already a major goal of this board, but in terms of their major recommendations, that will be largely in the spring. So the November recommendations will be largely around the compensation, and what recommendations they'd have for us to be more competitive. Is that correct, Ms. Quinn?
That's correct. So it's really providing information on our current position and what we're doing or not doing as compared to the other districts.
Got it. So then the next phase is, okay, what are you going to do about it?
Correct.
Is that, okay, all right, got it. And just, just to complete the frame on that, so what are we going to do about it? What expectation do you have for when those kinds of recommendations or information would ultimately come to the board, that they would start considering those? Any general timeframe on that? I'm not looking for a date, I'm just looking for a sense of what that is.
So I think as, you know, the consultants provide the report sometime in late spring, we will start to have discussions with the board about the various different options and recommendations. So as Dr. Garza mentioned, I do think there will be some items included in the '17 budget, but I believe the majority of the recommendations is going to have to be phased, as we all know, we're going to have to have significant infusion into the teacher salaries to stay competitive, and that will take multiple years. So we'll have more discussions in the fall.
They will also give us very specific feedback on some of our scales, which we, we know we've, in some cases tinkered with so much, that in some cases, they're, they're no longer working for us anymore. So they will give us specific feedback on specific scales where we are.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Just a quick question about Monday's work session. FCPS workforce diversity trends, this graph, I mean, I could see what the trend is, but will we be provided with a, a further desegregated data on this one, or this is it?
I, I think I need to look at the details. I think we are going to try to see if we could disaggregate it just a little bit more.
I would appreciate it. I, I saw the full report, it does not have the data, but I'm interested in this data if you have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much, Ms. Quinn. And if board members have questions, you know, ahead of Monday, I think it's probably helpful to submit them by email, so that staff is ready to answer on Monday.
That'd be great. And again, I want to thank, of course, Ms. Quinn, you did a great job, but your entire team, thank you all for your hard work on this.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. All right, item 6.01 Minutes. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing, listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and to the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member prior to the meeting. 6.01 Approve the minutes of October 22, 2015, regular school board meeting. 6.02 Confirm the elected members of the Fairfax County Public Schools Early Head Start Family and Early Childhood Education Program and Head Start Policy Committee. 6.03 Approve changes to the list of middle and high school course offerings for the 2016-2017 school year as recommended by the Course Review Committee and as detailed in the agenda item. 6.04 Adopt Policy 3510, adult education, adult literacy, adult high school completion, and community education as detailed in the agenda item. 6.05 Adopt Policy 1360, visitors to schools. Policy 1710, citizen advisory committees to the school board, and Policy 4810, types of leaves and leaves of absence, with administrative updates as detailed in the agenda item. 6.06 Approve citizen advisory committee appointments. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Item 7, New Business. Though following our new business agenda items, there will not be a vote tonight on these items, but action is scheduled at a future meeting. 7.01 Award the contract for the chiller replacement at Fairview Elementary School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.02 Award the contract for the chiller replacement at Lee High School to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.03 Award a contract for the Bucknell Elementary School renovation project to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, and authorize the division superintendent or the assistant superintendent of Facilities and Transportation Services to execute and administer the contract on behalf of the school board. 7.04 Adopt the resolution approving the 2016 sale of school bonds, and authorize the chairman or vice chairman with the advice of legal counsel for the school division to negotiate, execute, and administer the school board tax certificate and all of the documents as are deemed appropriate and advisable, and to do all things necessary to complete the transaction contemplated by the resolution as detailed in the agenda item. 7.05 Accept the strategic plan goal three, premier workforce presentation, and report as detailed in the agenda item. Also, I need to go back to item five, action items. I skipped this, I'm sorry, my mistake. Item 5.01 is the only item in action items, and that is being removed from the agenda for, for now. Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, I guess, advise my college and the public in general that I have concerns about the, the contract for Bucknell Elementary School, and I'll be speaking with you about that over the next week, but I just, I just want to make sure that I, I at least publicly advise everybody that. I, I just don't want there to be any surprises, so you should be hearing from me over the next week about it and the concerns that I have, and hopefully we can resolve them, but I just wanted to let everybody know. Thank you.
Item eight, superintendent may present items for information. I call on Dr. Garza.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. I just want to say on the, on the division-wide comprehensive plan, that is a compliance-related plan that's very specific about what we have to report on, and it is lagging data, and we know that full, full well. And so the points that were made tonight, you know, we certainly don't think it's the most exciting report in the world, but moving forward, we intend to fully integrate it with our strategic plan, our reports associated with that. I do want to say, as many of you have, have said in so many ways, our thoughts and prayers do continue to be with the individuals and the students that were injured at the incident at Woodson High School. I could not be more proud of the principal, Scott Poole, his faculty and staff, and the way in which they responded to a really difficult situation. And then certainly very grateful for the, the community, the entire community that's rallied around Woodson High School, as, as they've continued to try to move past the situation and focus on school. I also want to thank the first responders, as was pointed out earlier. We, you know, always reminded in situations like this about how important our partnerships with these other entities is moving forward. And I will say that we have some of the best science teachers in the United States. That is clear to me, and so whatever people might think or say, I think there's no doubt about that. We certainly, certainly have to make sure that we are providing a wonderful and engaging curriculum in the safest way, manner, safest possible way, and I know all of our teachers take that very seriously. But I do want to say how much we appreciate all of our great teachers, and certainly our science teachers. I also want to thank the members of our community who came out this week on Election Day and voted in favor of the 2015 bond referendum. Those votes are so important to this system. This bond passed with more than 73% of the voters in favor. It was a $310 million bond referendum that would allow for the very important expansion of capacity and the renovation of 14 schools throughout our system. And I know that at upcoming board meeting, we're going to recognize the Chamber, Fairfax County Chamber of Commerce, and I think that, that'll be great, but I just want to take a moment to say how much we appreciate them taking that leadership role in helping us get that bond passed. And then last week, we had seven FCPS, and Tim, thank you. Last week, seven FCPS schools were recognized by the National Wildlife Federation's ECHO Schools USA program for exceptional achievement in greening their buildings and grounds, conserving natural resources, and integrating environmental education into their curricula. To be awarded the prestigious green flag, and we've done some of that recently, and those are always exciting, the students and faculty at the seven schools tackled a host of sustainability initiatives that began with forming an ECHO action team, auditing facility energy efficiency, waste disposable, waste disposal, creating school gardens and wildlife habitats, conducting environmental arts projects, and work on many other environmental impact areas. And the schools that were recognized were Belvedere, Centerville, Chester Brook, Daniels Run, Franklin Sherman, and Haycock Elementary Schools, and Rocky Run Middle School, Middle School. These schools joined Lanier Middle School, Churchill Road Elementary School, Flint Hill, Lake Anne Elementary Schools, and Longfellow Middle School as FCPS ECHO schools. This is a major goal of this organization and has long been, and so we're very proud of the great work that these schools have done to set an example for our schools throughout our division, but also for other schools across the United States. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much. Item nine, Board Committee Reports. We have just one committee report tonight, the Audit Committee. Ms. Strauss?
Thank you. The Audit Committee met on October 28, and it was the first meeting to which our new citizen members attended, Mr. Cohen and Mr. Holland. At this committee report, at this committee meeting, we received the School Activity Funds Audit for the year ending June 30 to 2015, and the management letter, the audit found there was substantial compliance with established controls, policies, and regulations. The audit report is online, where there were exceptions or recommended corrections, that is noted online. One of the advantages that we talked about with the fact that we do this audit internally is that it also helps to further educate our finance techs and our school administrators to make sure that they are indeed following to the T all of the regulations, and that their, their accounting procedures are, are, are in detailed order. So it was a good report, there were no substantial findings, but as I say, there's always ongoing need for training and making sure that as we have turnovers, that everybody is keeping their books in perfect order. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strauss. Item 10, Board Matters. I call on Mr. McElvey. Board Matters.
Pass, thank you.
Ms. Smith?
I am pleased to announce that Jamie Sawatsky, social studies teacher at Rocky Run Middle School, was selected to participate in the 2016 Understanding Sacrifice program that's offered through National History Day. There were 118 applications for only 18 spots in the program, and the teachers in the program will attend a workshop next month in Arlington, Virginia, study World War II in the Mediterranean, travel to Switzerland, France, and Italy in July 2016, and develop lesson materials for a website called Understanding Sacrifice. Mr. Sawatsky has been an outstanding teacher at Rocky Run, with the work that the kids have done about World War II, and now going to other wars, and bringing in our veterans from the wars. It's just been outstanding work. They go into DC to greet veterans coming in, and I'm, I think it's a great honor, and he will really help the kids in the school and other schools in that influence. So congratulations to Mr. Sawatsky. Thank you.
Ms. Strauss?
I was at Franklin Sherman for the awarding of their green flag for being designated an ECHO school, and when the, the principal was celebrating with the students, she gave some interesting statistics, and I'd like to share you, share them with you. The school has reduced their trash by 1,746.9 pounds. They, in terms of saving paper, it equaled saving 26,204 trees with the amount of reduction in paper use. They donated 1,800 pounds of food by way of food buses, in other words, that goes to our shelters. They helped share, they helped feed over 1,000 family members and 337 families each month. They reduced their electricity use by 29,188 kilowatts, and they saved $15,000 on the utility bills. So, and becoming an Energy Star school and an ECHO school, kids were very excited, and the students throughout the day gave a wonderful presentation on how all of these activities are incorporated into their science curriculum, and it was presented by the students. They had written, they had presented it, and there were stations throughout the school. It was very, very impressive, and the kids were very excited, and they all wore green. It was an excellent, excellent presentation. Thanks.
Mr. Stork?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple, a couple notes. First and foremost, I want to thank our, our firefighters who have the lead on this every year, is, along with other uniformed members of our county government, including sheriff and police. Folks, we have a, had a coat and sneaker distribution on the 28th of October. Again, it's an annual event. It is an amazing, amazing operation. Again, it's been shouldered by the firefighters who collect and really put everybody together to make this happen. I, you know, the look on the faces of the, of the students that are coming in from, from preschool to, to our school counselors who are there to collect coats and sneakers for, to help children, I mean, it's really such a wonderful event. And it's been led for, for as long as I can remember, which is more than a decade, by Commander, now Commander Will Bailey. He is, kind of epitomizes the essence of, of Fairfax County volunteers and people who truly make a difference. The other note of this is that Will Bailey is also, as of this past Tuesday, the newly, actually, the Alexandria City Council member-elect. So he will be a public official, he will continue obviously working for Fairfax County, but I am proud for him, and obviously, I think Alexandria made a wise and a very appropriate choice to be one of their leaders. So again, it's a wonderful event and wonderful activity, and it makes a real difference for our kids. I had the pleasure of being at Storytime earlier this evening with Staffordland Elementary School, and it's always a wonderful time to read students' stories, and I read my favorite, which is Abe Lincoln's hat. So it, I'll never get tired of reading that story. And the escapades with particularly the, the kids knocking his hat off and jumping on top of Abe Lincoln, which is part of the joke that they played on him. I do have, I do want to acknowledge and want to, I guess, really honor our veterans on the, on the 11th of November, which is coming up very shortly, and really all the work and all the, the efforts that we do in our schools to make sure that they're honored, and to make sure that their history and their experiences and their sacrifices are passed on to our students, something that on a firsthand basis is extremely powerful and one that I continue to support. And last but not least, I have office hours on November 14, and Laurel, at Lorton's Library on, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM on the 14th, that's a Saturday, and from Sherwood Hall Library from 12:30 to 2:30, and all are welcome. It's, it's first come, first served, so please don't hesitate to join me. Thank you.
Ms. Evans?
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Press for inviting me to join him at the student leadership class at Stewart High School. We had a wonderful conversation, very thoughtful, with the students there on a variety of topics that Mr. Press organized and drew them out on a number of topics, and we were able to take a quick tour of the Esau Pilot program, too, which was very, very impressive. So I enjoyed that time and hope to see more of the folks there. Thank you.
Mr. Moon?
Pass.
Ms. Reed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to take this opportunity to thank everyone who attended the Providence District Budget Town Hall last week. I want to thank Ms. Quinn for being there and helping field a lot of questions. Mr. Press? Mr. Press was there, and he was very helpful and very vocal, and also Jennifer Getz, who lives in the Providence District and participates in the budget task force. So thank you all for contributing. There were a lot of good questions. I would say about half the time, we were educating folks on how they can advocate and learn more about the budget process, and then they just had a lot of very good questions. So I encourage people to continue to be involved on the budget. Go online, look at the budget tool, and please stay tuned all the way through May. Thank you.
Ms. McGlocklin?
Well, it's been a difficult couple of weeks in Braddock District. As Dr. Garza so eloquently spoke earlier, the Woodson community was affected by an accident in the chemistry class, and it did impact our students and the teachers, and not just those who were directly injured, but more importantly, I really hope that this board and our community understands, every student and every teacher who saw those injured individuals at the moment of the accident, they're reliving those images, and I really want to convey my appreciation for what amazing school system we have. As many of you know, we have a crisis intervention team, and I don't know how many school systems in the nation have it, but this is exactly the time when we need those crisis intervention experts to come in and work with our students and our teachers who have been exposed to really serious traumas. And so, to Cindy Dickinson and Jane Lipp and the amazing team that you all have, thank you so much for providing that support to the Woodson community at this time. I'm hearing really great things about that. I also wanted to share with my colleagues that when the accident happened on Friday in the morning, they did proceed with the football game that evening, and as a former football parent, I was there for the game. And what absolutely warmed my heart is both a board member and a parent, is when the West Springfield football team, after a really difficult and upset overtime win by Woodson Football, the team, the West Springfield team joined our players and coaches on the middle of the field for a moment of silence and recognition of support for the Woodson community on that one, and it really does, really reflect the incredible support that we have in this county, that one school to another, after all that, really looked at what really was the most important thing. And just tonight, in terms of the other difficulty that we've had in Braddock District, Robinson High School lost a student unexpectedly a week ago Monday, and it was a very profound loss for the Robinson community. And yet, the Woodson Cavalry just tweeted this afternoon, "We love you, Robinson SGA, and the Robinson Band, we're thinking of you, and the O'Neill family, hashtag ram strong." This is just, again, an example of how our community really looks out for one another. And so, I do hope that we all think about the communities that have been affected by this and try to keep them in our prayers. And to the Woodson students and the teachers, please know that we are thinking of you, and we hope that each day brings you the type of support you need for healing. I also just wanted to let my colleagues know that Ms. Kofax and I were at the skip meeting this week, and one of the things we're really looking at is trying to identify the best way to bring you all up to speed on the work of the skip, and we're actually going to have a planning meeting on that with the two supervisors, because they have a venue that I think is working better for them, but we don't really have the same thing. They have a human services committee they report to. And then finally, I want to first thank our wonderful student, Ben Press. Thank you for speaking again tonight about the homework regulation and the workload impact on students. This continues to be a concern of mine, and hearing in my own schools that we have students who are dropping out of AP classes because the homework has them up till 3 o'clock in the morning, it's not because they can't master the material. We've got individual teachers, I think, who just quite aren't aware of the guidelines and best practices of what homework should look like, and so I think, you know, we've got to look at it as a system-wide issue, but we also need to work with our regional superintendents and principals where it might be more at the individual school level. But we should not be having bright students leaving the AP curriculum because of homework loads. And then finally, I want to thank Fairfax County resident Steve Martinez, who has spoken before this board in the past about Veterans Day. He was, his editorial was published on Saturday under Local Opinions, and I'll be forwarding it to our board colleagues. This is something that some of us still wrestle with on the board, and I think the point that he made most cogently that I've been hearing and continue to hear from veterans is that we absolutely should recognize and talk about veterans and Veterans Day in our schools, just like we do Martin Luther King Day and President's Day and Christopher Columbus on Columbus Day. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't honor a state and federal holiday, and there are many veterans, including a World War II veteran who reached out to me this week, who continue to struggle with the message we send on that being the only federal holiday that this school system doesn't recognize and allow our families, and especially our military families, to spend it with their children. So I think it's something we still have to try and sort through. I don't think we're where we need to be.
Ms. Schultz?
So, I want to thank Ms. Quinn and some of our support staff for holding, during a very difficult time, a budget town hall. I know I asked a lot, but I thought that was important to begin the budget discussion with the members in my community. I tend to find that the Springfield District is often very different, provides a very different type of feedback than maybe some of the other districts experience, and I think that maybe that budget town hall is no exception. I do think that engaging the community early on is helpful, because we're talking very pragmatically about how we handle some of the weighty issues before us with the budget divide. So, thank you to those in the Springfield District who came. Thank you to the staff for helping set that up, and I look forward to doing more of those. I was asked at that time when I was going to do my citizen town halls and my community office hours, we were a little busy, but those will start again soon. So I thank you, members of the public, asking for those and indicating how much you appreciate that type of engagement. Like Ms. McGlocklin and being a Ram parent, the last couple of weeks have just been really difficult for not only the student population, but the teachers, the administrators. I want to thank everybody for continuing to provide the support to our community, and I too am very, very concerned about the level of stress that I'm seeing in our students. I had a PTA president's meeting for all the PTA presidents in the Springfield District, and specifically Dr. Garza, there was a lot of feedback about the 37-day quarter and the amount of stress that put kids under, receiving grades and having an extremely short quarter. It was pretty negatively received, so I hope we don't do that again. I know we were under, you know, the gun with a super late start, September 8 this year, but I look forward to working with our colleagues to have a more balanced quarter system going forward, or trimesters or something. But I do want teachers and administrators to also be aware, the other complaint, not complaint, the other feedback I've gotten from students is the piling-on effect, particularly that happens in the last week of the quarter, and I've never seen students pull all-nighters in high school like I saw this quarter. And that degree of stress is not, it's not good for anybody, but particularly not for our young people. So whatever we can do to balance assessments leading into, especially the beginning of the year, when kids are getting ready for college applications and the like, I encourage continued collaboration on that. I do want to thank Dr. Outwater specifically for her help and support to the Robinson community over some of the recent issues there. She's been very communicative with me and I'm sure very helpful to them, and I hope to continue that going forward. And finally, Veterans Day, I, you know, there's a vastly different set of opinions on this board. I know that we do some things incredibly well in some schools. I always look forward to going to those celebrations at my schools that embrace and conduct a beautiful ceremony like there is at Sangster, but it isn't uniform, and it isn't, it isn't, it just isn't uniform. And I will not, you know, I will not stop looking for an equal treatment of veterans and the federal holiday on our calendar, and I hope to be able to address that next year. So thank you very much.
Mr. Velkoff?
I pass.
All right. Well, we actually are not going to be able to adjourn this meeting yet because we did not finish our closed-meeting discussion earlier. So what we have to do instead is to have a motion to go back into closed meeting. The board will now make a motion to go into closed meeting to discuss and consider the disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the school board pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A3, and to consult with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2, 3711A7. Do I have a motion? Mr. Moon, seconded by Ms. Evans. All those in favor? It is unanimous. We'll go into closed session.